I'm going to get Peter going. Make sure Peter's got his act together.
Okay, Ron.
Okay. Stanford will pledge.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Just take a moment. Think about the troops. Okay, thank you. I should have also said about the firefighters in Greenwood Lake, too.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. We have a couple of things in front of us today. And I'm sure you guys want to get out of here. Okay, the first is...
Ron, I'm sorry to interrupt you. You need to call a meeting to order, please.
Call a meeting to order?
Thank you.
Do I need a...I don't need a motion to that, do I? Do I need a motion to call the meeting?
Motion, call the meeting to order.
Thank you.
One favor?
Aye.
Okay, let's get rolling here. Thirty-three LaMala Road. Mr. Paul and Ms. Donna Hardisty, ZBA application, ZB 24005. You're looking for a seven-inch right-hand setback. Seven inches. That must have made you feel good, huh? Okay, "With twenty-five feet as minimum setback in the R-40 zoning district for the construction of a single-family dwelling, said request would result in a twenty-four-foot, five-inch right-hand setback, said request in violation of Town Code Section 150, Attachment 1, Schedule of Regulations for Residential Districts. The affected land is on tax map 6356 Block 01, Lot 258613, located thirty-three LaMala." Okay? You got the floor.
Ron.
Okay?
You got to open the public hearing. They needed a motion to open the public hearing.
Motion to open the public hearing.
Motion.
Second.
Second. One favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you for considering our variance request. In the process of building a single-family dwelling, foundation was put in. And while trying to square it up with the road, apparently the contractor shifted a little bit too far and the back end, right back end of the foundation came in at post-survey, twenty-four feet, five inches, when it should be twenty-five feet. So we're requesting a seven-inch variance.
Well, we're not going to bust your chops. Okay, we feel kind of bad for you that you've been through this.
Thank you.
I smacked a contractor around a little bit, you know? Maybe get a couple of thousand off on the...
His heart was in the right place. His measuring stick was not.
What I like to do, is I like to close a public hearing on this. If anybody has any questions...
Yeah, you got to open up the public.
Open it up to the public?
Right, so if anybody in the...anybody here would like to be heard on it.
Does anybody have any questions about this application? Okay. So, no questions. I'd like to close the public hearing. Is that right now?
Motion to close.
Yeah, you need a motion to close.
Motion to close?
Motion.
Does anyone have a second?
Second.
One favor?
Aye.
Okay, I'd like to take a vote on this.
Right, quickly go through the...quickly go through the balancing test and the five factors. It's a balancing test weighing the benefit to the applicant against any detriment to the health, safety, and welfare of the community guided by the five factors that you're very familiar with. First is whether there be an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties caused by the grant of the area variance. Anybody feel like there be any such negative impact?
No.
Undesirable change?
Absolutely not.
No.
Next is whether there is some feasible alternative to the variance?
There is none.
Anybody have any comments?
Done.
Okay. Next is whether it's substantial.
It's not.
Next is whether it would have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district.
No.
No.
And then last is, is it self-created?
I don't think this is self-created. This is probably one of the first I've seen that's not self-created.
First time for everything.
Okay.
Okay, so it sounds like all the factors are lining up in favor of a grant. You can undertake a motion or hear a motion to grant the variances.
Motion to grant. Do I have a motion to grant?
Motion to grant.
Second?
Second.
Do I have a second?
Second.
One favor?
Aye.
And then take a separate motion to direct me to prepare a resolution and to authorize the chairman to sign it?
Okay. Do you have a motion? And have a second?
A second.
One favor?
Aye.
Okay. You guys, this passed for you now. Now do they have to wait for you to get the paperwork before they can move forward?
Yes.
Okay. So you'll probably have that within a week or so, two weeks? Okay. You'll have something in a week or two.
Okay, thank you very much for your consideration of time.
Good luck to you guys.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Okay, the second application is Mr. John Serapelli. One-twenty-nine Route eighty-two, ZBA application, ZB twenty-four zero-zero-six. The applicant is seeking a front yard variance for such a structure or a small shed that would require setback requirements for all buildings that's going to be in front of the structure, in front of your house. Let me read this whole thing. "Applicant is seeking a front yard variance where such structure or storage area shall comply with all yard setback requirements for buildings, but in no case shall be permitted in the front yard to install a twelve-by-eighteen prefabricated shed in the front yard. Said request in violation of one-five-zero-dash-four-eight-A, Schedule of Regulations for Residential Districts. The land affected by this application is generally shown on tax map six-five-six Block zero-two, Lot nine-three-zero-five-three-five, located in one-twenty-nine Route eighty-two, consisting of two-point-six-five acres in the R-20 and R-40 zoning districts." I'd like to have a motion to open this up for a public hearing.
Motion to open public hearing.
Do I have a second?
Second.
One favor?
Aye.
Okay. Mr. Serapelli, you've been here before. We can, you know, give you a presentation.
Yes, so basically, the lay of the land doesn't really give me too many options there.
Right.
If you've gone by, you could see it's all up, there's a lot of rock, there's nowhere to put it. Currently, there's a two-car garage there where I want to put this shed adjacent to it. That doesn't seem to, you know, it doesn't look like there will be any impact, physical impact, environmental impact on anybody. There's not too many ways to go on that property. Basically, the shed is going to complement the garage except it's not going to be attached.
It's going to sit a little further back, right?
Yeah, it's going to be back a little bit, about a foot.
Yeah.
But that's it. You know, I'm not coming past that line.
Right.
That line is the line, but it's going to be setback just a little bit from the garage. The garage is about twenty-one feet deep, so that shed's eighteen. So it's going to be basically to the back of the garage.
Okay.
So we'll have a little setback in the front there. But also, we do have fencing in the front. I mean, I know you were concerned about possibly people seeing it, drive-by eighty-two. I mean, it's not a, it's not an eyesore that we're putting there. It's something attractive. And honestly, looking at my front yard this week, and I visually see three sheds right from my property, so I don't know if the visible, you know, visibility of a shed is a problem.
Your neighbor's sheds?
Yeah, three of them right in front of me. Never even noticed it, but who's looking at a shed?
Now, now you do.
You know, I'm not looking for a shed. People go by, they say, "Wow, the house looks nice. You did a lot of work." I don't get, "Oh, wow, you got a new shed?" You know, I don't get that too often. But there's not one there, obviously, now, but I don't expect that. But, you know, we're doing it in good taste. We're not looking, you know, I'm looking to enhance the property. Not only make it look good, it's going to serve a purpose, you know, for my yard equipment, for, you know, pool equipment, you know, anything I got. Right now, there's, in the house, there's not, there's no storage. It's a, it's a very small closets. There's no basement slab on grade. There's nowhere to put anything. The garage has a little...
You've got a very nice piece of property there.
Excuse me?
You've got a very nice piece of property.
Yeah.
You take care of it, you know, that's obvious.
Yeah.
I have no doubt the shed's going to, you know, be very nice, too, you know? So what I like to do here is...
Questions.
Do you have any questions?
No.
Anybody from the floor want to speak up about this?
Ron, I have one question. I think really it's for David, and I kind of think I already know the answer. Is there anything here to be said about precedent? Or is each case individual? And we're okay with that?
Yeah, I mean, every, every case stands on its own.
Okay.
Its own unique facts. People can argue, well, I'm more, it's just like a court case, really, right? It's, there's a concept of precedent, but, I mean, every property is unique. Unless you have the identical property, there are differentiating factors, you know, all over the place.
So somebody can't come in here and say, "Well, you gave it to John. Now you have to give it to me."
They can say it.
Yeah.
Doesn't mean you have to.
Okay.
You know, if, you know, if, if all of the relevant factors to the balancing tests all weigh the same in a new application, you know, the grant of one here could support that, but it doesn't require it if there's, if there's differences. If there's material differences between properties and projects, as there almost always are...
Okay.
You're fine.
So we wouldn't be completely locking ourselves into the rest of the community?
Definitely not.
If we were to approve it?
Definitely not.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Motion to close.
Okay. I'd like to close the public hearing since there's no more questions.
Motion to close?
Second. One favor?
Aye.
Okay. And I'd like to go through the five factors and make determination whether we should approve this. Okay. So, is it an undesirable change? And will, will, will an undesirable change affect the character of the neighborhood?
No, I don't see it happening.
Anybody?
No.
I don't see it. Will the benefits offered by the applicant can be achieved any other way?
I think he's made his case about that.
The kind of, the terrain on the property kind of dictates that.
Is it substantial?
I don't think so.
I don't think it's substantial.
I think that's the point here, really.
Will the proposed area variance will have adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood or the zoning district?
No.
I don't think so either. Okay. Will it be self-created?
Yeah. Yes, out of need.
Can't help that one.
No argument.
But I think, but I think in, you know, in everything that's considered here, I think we should, we could take a vote. Do I have a...
Motion to grant?
Motion to grant?
Second.
Second. One favor?
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations, sir.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Need a motion for David.
And motion for David to write up the paperwork, the necessary paperwork?
And to authorize the chairman to sign it.
Authorize, yes, and I guess I will have to sign it.
I'll make that motion.
All right. Second. One favor?
Aye.
Okay, you'll probably hear from us in a week or so, okay?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. Bye.
Should we skip the Petticoat Lane before we get into, no? Basis Industrial, Route nine-D, ZBA application, ZB two-four-zero-three. Oh, there's a lot of, a lot of things to read here. "The applicant is seeking the following variances for the redevelopment of four-point-nine-eight acres of the property located within general business zoning district. No construction activity is proposed within the R-15 zoning district. The redevelopment shall consist of demolition of the existing Red Pepper Diner and the Orange County Transit Buildings for the construction of a hundred-and-twelve-thousand-five-hundred-and-eighty-four square-foot two-story self-storage building, a three-thousand, I'm sorry, a twenty-two-hundred square-foot fast-food establishment, and a three-thousand-forty-five square-foot car wash. The existing Schenoch though station at Fulmarch shall remain. Additional project improvements will include parking, driving aisles, lighting, landscaping, and associated amenities." The floor area, should I have to, do I have to read all of these things?
You don't have to read them verbatim, the one through six you're talking about?
Yeah.
No, I would just, you could read the, you can summarize that it's a floor area vari, you know, I'm sorry, an FAR variance, you know, a boundary setback for the drive-through facility. Just go through each of them just that way, and the record will reflect what's been requested.
All right, now, when we go through these, we go through these one at a time, right? When we go through these...
Yeah, eventually, when you, yeah, when you get to, yeah, yeah.
Okay. All right. There are six variances they're looking for. One is a floor area variance. Okay, which is point-one, point-one-eight floor area variance where point-four floor area variance maximum allowed, is allowed, result in a point-five-eight FAR. The second is the boundary setback for the, this is, for the drive-through facility. Seventeen-foot setback for the drive-through facility. The third is the off-street parking, ninety-nine spakers, spaces where a hundred-and-fifty-six are required. Off-street loading, a variance of five loading spaces where seven are required. Maximum building height. Is that really a variance for that? The maximum building height?
Yeah, it's, the maximum building height is two and a half. This is technically three because of the basement.
Yeah, including...
So they need a variance to get it to three, to allow the three, because the code, the way it operates under the code, it's considered three.
Okay. All right, so we'll just, we'll just say that. And the monument sign, where a variance of one monument sign, where they're looking for a second. I'm not going to go through all of these things. All right, gentlemen, you have the floor.
Good evening. For the record, Corey Salam, I'm from Zerran and Steinmetz. You've gone through all the variances. I will note that at the last meeting, we discussed the second monument sign, and we had agreed that we're just going to reduce it to one monument sign, so we're not seeking that variance.
Okay, so you're removing that?
We're removing that. So it's just, it's just one monument sign?
Number six, the monument sign. Oh, yes, yes, I'm sorry.
Or was it still open?
Well, the public hearing is still open, or is it...
Yes.
It's open.
Yep, okay. I'm sorry, sir.
No, no worries. So at the last meeting, I think we went through the other five variances, and I think everyone was pretty comfortable with everything. We were just directed to go back to the planning board to ensure that they were, they would give conceptual approval or their blessing to the additional parking spaces that we added for the gas station and the circulation. We appeared before the planning board twice. At the conclusion of their first meeting, they wanted to hear from CPL, their consultant, to make sure that our traffic circulation was as we said that it was, that it worked. We increased it to make sure that it would fit a twelve-thousand-gallon tanker, sixty-foot truck. CPL reviewed that memo, and at last Thursday's planning board meeting, planning board received the memo where they said circulation worked, parking worked, and the planning board gave their blessing.
I do have that memo. It's been, it's been entered into the record. Okay?
I don't know, Debbie, did the planning board do anything in writing to the ZBA?
They don't do that.
They don't do that. So it's just in the minutes and in the video, but they did...
It was in the record, it's pretty much...
In the record. Correct. And they have no, they had no issues with our plan modifications based on your request to add additional spaces.
Yeah, I was, honestly, I was surprised, to be honest with you. But go ahead, sir.
That's it, so we're here. I mean, I think we've answered all the questions. If you have any additional questions, more than happy to answer them, but we're, look forward to hopefully a vote this evening.
Well, of course, we have questions.
Yeah.
Let the floors, let the floor first.
Yeah, let's, let's let the floor speak up. I know there's just some gentlemen here on the floor that would probably like to speak up about this.
Yes, good evening. My name is Joseph Castellin. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Young Summer. We represent M&amp;A Realty Inc., who's actually the tenant that has been operating at this site since nineteen-ninety-seven. They operate the retail gas station convenience store. My client, Mitch Neshewat, is here tonight as part of this and certainly can answer any questions you have. But we're here to provide the board with some information and to correct the record otherwise based on what we understand have been representations about my client's use or what's been going on at the site. We understand the applicant has been moving forward for some time with this, but there's been what we feel are not accurate representations about what my client's rights are. The first instance, my client has been at this site since nineteen-ninety-seven, operating in extensions of five-year lease periods, which we assert we have a right to continue to operate there until 2037. My client had some initial discussions where it seemed the applicant didn't disagree with that, but things may have changed over time. But we have commenced lawsuit, a lawsuit against the applicant to assert our rights that we do have a right to stay there and as well as use the existing four access points to the site based on, that's how the operations were when we first took the site in nineteen-ninety-seven and have continued to use those. We did submit information to the planning board and the ZBA over time. The information reflects that when my client first came onto the site, those were the access points. My client has continued to use those. My client expended effort in paving those to associate, so they continue to use them with the site. My client has plowed the site, maintained those access points. My client, otherwise, with the big trucks that come in to deliver gas, they've used the site and all the area currently there for the paved areas so the trucks can come in and adequately turn around. My understanding, there's been certain representations made about what's sufficient for those trucks or not. The applicant hasn't really reached out to my client to confirm any of this information, but what we have seen, which we did submit a report in the past from Labella Engineers, where they had provided information explaining the type of use that's going on at the site and what's going to continue to need to be used. My understanding is the applicant is seeking to use existing parking that my client asserts they have a lease right to use as part of this, you know, variance approval and project that you guys are considering tonight, but they don't have the legal rights to do that, my client's position. And the lawsuit we have reflects that, that not only the access points, but the paved areas associated with the site are all part of the lease agreement. My client has been using them well before the applicant came on the scene based on ongoing relationship with NINNIE management, which is the current and has been the owner of the site. And they previously operated the site before nineteen-ninety-seven in the same basically manner my client has been operating the site. So we think there's a number of things that may have been raised before the board but are not directly accurate, so we wanted to, you know, certainly get into those. Looking at the agenda for tonight, I do see the applicant is seeking a number of these variances. As you're aware, area variance standards include, at least according to your case law, any area variance you should be granting the minimum needed, not the maximum they can actually ask for. Also, a factor to be considered is whether or not the hardship is self-created. And here, it seems you have an applicant that has a dispute with a long, a long-existing tenant about what are, what is not associated with that tenant's use. The applicant is making plans, even though they don't own the land yet, they're still bound by these lease agreements, to make modifications, and they're asking the board for approval for those modifications, but they don't have the legal right to do the, do those. Some of the modifications they're here seeking for, which again, is that they're getting the minimum needed variance or otherwise it's self-created, you know, as you had mentioned, they're seeking a seventeen-foot boundary setback or a hundred-and-fifty-foot boundary is required. They're asking for a hundred-and-thirty-three setback boundary in the district, which would result in a violation unless a variance was given. They're seeking, they're acknowledging there's a use that under your code says they need a hundred-and-fifty-six parking spaces, but they're looking for a variance of ninety-nine parking spaces. So clearly, they're proposing a use that is well beyond what the zoning contemplated for this site, and they're seeking to get maximum variances instead of what the law provides, the minimum variance needed, as well as, again, creating a self, they're creating their own hardship here by seeking to jam a use into where you need a hundred-and-fifty parking spaces, and they want a variance of ninety-nine. Similar with the off-street loading, a variance of five loading spaces or seven loading spaces are required. Maximum building height, again, they're seeking a variance of a half a story where, you know, the minimum is two and a half. So again, it's not they're seeking what's the minimum that would be sufficient for this, they're seeking as much as they can get, which again, is just a self-created hardship. So my client would suggest there is not accurate information for the board. The applicant is seeking to undertake a use they don't have the right to do, and certainly now there is pending litigation that they're well aware of. They've answered the litigation, and it's going to continue. So this could all just be a big waste of time for the board, or otherwise, the board could be making decisions based on inaccurate information.
Did you bring these, this up to the planning board? My, my thing that I picked up on right off the top was the access points. Now, that's not, that's not our, that's not my lane, okay? But, you know, that's something that, you know, that's the only way I see access to those pumps, especially if there's a truck there, you know, you know, dumping.
Correct.
Now, I was surprised that the planning board approved this new plan. They approved it. Even after the, you know, their traffic expert, you know, that, you know, his, his assessment didn't see a problem with it, you know? Now, just, I don't know, was today or yesterday, driving by there, and I saw a truck unloading fuel, and I saw a soda truck there. And I don't see in this plan where there's a place for a soda truck, which was also a tractor-trailer, and, you know, a fuel truck dumping at the same time.
Sixty footer.
I, I brought that up before, and you did not, did not include that. And I, I have a problem with that. You know? It looks like one of those trucks has to park in the road, the access road in the back. And while those two trucks are there, there is actually no access to the pumps, which is impacting the business. We brought that up, too, especially if there's, when there's hoses out in the ground, stuff like that. Now, there's an island there, and I was surprised that, you know, when you're looking at the site, can we, can we bring it up?
Who can do that?
There's a computer up here. I don't know if somebody's able to...
Because I can lay it out here.
That would be the...
Hmm?
Return you snap, that's not the...
Right, now, if you look at the...
Bring it in slower. You can zoom in on that a lot, right?
Yeah, you...
Effective area.
Yeah, now, let's look at the pumps, the access to the pumps.
Ron, let me bring that in a little more.
Yeah, okay. Well, you're fine. Now, we see here from Route nine-D, here again, this is, this is all part of the traffic thing here. You have access to the storage facility, okay? But there's an island there. There's, there's a grassy knoll or something there between that road and the gas pumps. I don't understand why there was not an access to the pumps from that road. And I'm surprised the planning board did not pick up on that. Now, again, this is out of our lane here, because this is where we, we, we're supposed to look at these, you know, these, these variances. But the problem is, the planning board approved this plan. I don't know how to, you know, I don't know what to say.
Maybe you could answer a question for me as well.
Sure.
You're saying the applicant is taking away access points?
That was part of their development plan.
Right. You've had how many access points in the past?
We've had all of these access points, one, two, three, four.
Four access points, and you're going to be down to how many?
They're proposing down two.
Okay, so you're going to take two of your access points away.
Right.
Well, actually, isn't one of those access points now an exit?
Yeah, well, they're being used as ingress and egress, so both are coming from Route 9D, or ingress and egress, both coming from Papa's Lane are ingress, egress right now.
Okay, and then you have the one entrance-exit off of 9D as well, right?
Off of 9D.
And that's not getting closed up until at the end of your lease, so essentially...
We don't know, it's been proposed to be... Sorry, do you want to...
My name is Mitch Nashwatt, I'm the tenant's...
Can you just come up and speak to the mic?
Hi, good evening. My name is Mitch Nashwatt, I'm the tenant of the location. Actually, I wasn't aware of the planning board approved this, only after the fact from a customer. We didn't know. So I met the applicant, which is the purchaser. I know the Nini family for the past 35 years, and he was so nice to me, he says, "No, you're... We're sorry, I apologize, I didn't read the lease the way you wrote it, I have 17 years' lease." The meaning of the lease was a settlement, they gave me 10 years additional, because I cleaned up the site. Wayne Jeffrey before me, the site was polluted. I took the old tanks out, I put on new tanks, I cleaned it up, all the environmental, and I got those extra additional years. So they are aware of the full lease. He apologized to me, he says, "Yeah, you know, I'm sorry, we know we haven't leased." Even I spoke to Dave Simon, he was my attorney, he presented them now, which is a conflict. He recognized I have a lease, and he was my attorney, not at that project, but I use him in so many times. I wasn't aware of anything over the planning board, I'm opposing to this project. The reason is, I have no place to... What I got to do with my snow, what I got to do with it? What I got to take it? Anybody figure this out?
See, here again, this is, I understand, but...
But they lied to the planning board.
He wasn't presenting his case, because he was...
And they lied to the planning board, they told them, when the planning board approved this, they thought I have two years. This is by the time they get the approval, and they get the building permit, and they put the footing on my lease, goodbye. That's why they proved it. So they mis-present themselves to the planning board. And they lied on the record.
David, can you...
Well, I mean, I assume that you were at the planning board the last two weeks, I mean, the last two meetings, and the planning board's aware of the current situation, you know, in advance of last week, right?
When you get pregnant, you weren't aware that you are pregnant, after you got pregnant.
Well, I mean, I think this issue has been before your board and before the planning board, in regard to dispute over the lease, for the last several months, hasn't it? I mean, it's not been a secret to the planning board that you have a dispute, right?
We have a dispute of the lease. Yeah, I think the lease has been resolved.
The lease has been resolved, but just, the attorneys, because I sent a lot of students, they became cute, they want to be cute, they can't have so much. We have no lease, okay? That's a tactic.
Wait, I don't, I can't speak to what's going on between the tenant and the... I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'll let you speak. Please, you haven't let me finish a sentence yet. Just let me speak, and then you can speak, that's how this goes, okay? Right? My point is only, I don't know, and this board doesn't know, the merits of your lawsuit, they don't know the merits of the situation that's going on between you and your landlord. And I don't think it's any really of concern in terms of the five factors and the balancing test, but my point is, the planning board, you brought these issues to the attention of the planning board, certainly over the last month, you were there two times, and this issue wasn't in the shadows until tonight. This issue has been discussed freely with the planning board, and with that information in hand, they gave the blessing at the last meeting. Is that accurate?
Well, that's not accurate, I've never been from the planning board.
Well, the letter was, and I assume you had counsel there, right?
I met with him as a gentleman, face-to-face in his office, in Don Arma, and we thought we should have deals, they got to keep the interest the way it is. Okay, I've been lying to, okay?
I guess my point is, somebody brought it to the attention of the planning board. The planning board knew in the last two meetings that this was an issue.
Please, I know, you asked a question, you told me to shut up and that, same way for you, you got to be quiet until I finish. I know you're attorney. I have to express to the board, to the board, what's what happened, not to you. I'm talking to the board, I'm not talking to you.
Well, I'm talking to you, and I'm asking you a question, I'm just asking, did the planning board know, or did the planning board not know?
And you're speaking to me as an attorney, okay?
I'm speaking to you as an applicant, you're an applicant, I'm the attorney for the board.
You have to respect my way of talking, and I got to respect my... Let me explain myself, give me a chance. You're acting like a district attorney here.
Okay, go ahead, go ahead. Okay.
I met with the applicant, he's not the owner of the property. I, all for the past 25 years, I have good relationship with the Nini family, okay? And those three, four partners of the family, they're not talking to each other. I'm sorry to say that, you know, I know the old man, when he drive the car with no legs, so is Nini, they're all the good people, God bless his souls. Gene Nini's father, Gene Nini was my engineer, he designed a lot of gas stations for me. I always get along good with them, okay? There's, the applicant, he mis-presented the plans to the planning board, period. I wasn't opposed of the project, they want to put a storage, or things, I'm opposing the project, because the way they did it, the blocking my entrances, what is my snow flow, the snow got to go? How my trailer is, you know, I'm dumping gas there, 76-foot trailer, this one, I don't know what kind of study you do.
See, I under, we understand that, but again, this is, these are things that should have been brought up at the planning board, that's the problem.
So, in terms of what the planning board did, before my client was made aware of this application, the planning board had already conducted and completed its seeker review, so they were not willing to reopen it, but, you know, to the extent we were able to provide them letters with information after the fact we did, but they had determined that the seeker review was completed, even though the seeker review was based on what we would say was wrong evidence. So, but I do think, and I understand, you're saying this is, we are looking at these area variances tonight. There certainly is a dispute in this plan about what percentage of the pavement and property can be used from the gas station associated with this project. They're seeking a boundary setback, they're seeking off-street parking, off-street loading.
Well, the boundary setback would not affect you.
Understand, I'm just going through what they're looking for. So, they're seeking these area variances, I would think off-street parking could be implicated as well as off-street loading, depending on whether proposing it. And if they're proposing to use what my client has a right to under his lease, then they shouldn't be entitled to any of those variances in the first instance, until the planning board, excuse me, until the zoning board has information clear that they have a right to use those, otherwise they shouldn't be entitled to any variances.
Well, I partially agree with you, okay? Some of these variances have nothing to do with you.
Sure.
Okay, you know, the height of the building.
Well, no, I get that.
So, the, the, the only thing that you're, you should be concerned about is the gas station, access to the gas station, and the parking for the gas station. We tried to address that, okay? And they did. They did, you know? They did not address the loading issue that I brought up, and I don't see a loading spot for the soda truck, for example.
One thing, Mr. Chairman, my septic's behind the gas station, I don't think they locate the septic with the gas station. This gas station is not on sewer. I got, well, on septic, I got water, now town water, on a septic, and my septic right off behind the, behind the gas station, Jason did it, right off at the, behind it.
Now, will the sewer...
There's no sewer.
Well, here again, that's part of planning, but sewer is going to be brought onto the property for the car wash in the back. Will they hook up the sewer to this? I mean, here again, that's, we're out of our lane here.
But it goes to, I could see, you know, if they're proposing to use part of the area behind the gas station, and this is part of what they're seeking here, it's not clear to what extent the septic field might be included within that shaded area.
But I think it would be a benefit if you hook up to the sewer that's being brought onto the property.
That's not our option right now, it certainly hasn't been addressed by the landowner. Again, we're certainly, we're just a tenant, we don't have the option to just dictate what we can do and can't do. But again, it hasn't been presented by the owner or the applicant, so it's off the table for us, we don't have any control over that.
That's fair enough.
We think, though, if they affect your septic fields, that they would be responsible for rectifying the situation.
Correct, but I mean, I assume every, it's the same across the state, if you have a septic field, you can't really construct or use, you know, over it.
Right.
It can be rectified, they can decide unilaterally to connect the building to the septic, or, excuse me, to connect the building to sewer, but as of now, that's not addressed, and it's not something that's ever been raised with my client. It certainly impacts the use of the station, but it just hasn't been addressed. And again, same with off-street parking or loading, to what extent they're planning on using, you know, station property, we would say they don't have a right to, we have a right to continue to use it. And I understand the entrance and exit, you know, the ingress and egress might be more of a planning board issue, but certainly these issues, this is the variances they're seeking tonight, are within your purview.
Question for you, that directly pertains to the variances here, on parking. Is your client satisfied with what the applicant has done to rectify what we consider a problem for parking?
So there hasn't been any communications with the applicant, my client, about what they've, you know, been proposing to do or not?
You see the plans, you see what they've done, have you looked at the plans?
We haven't been provided a copy with their updated plans.
Well, that's a problem.
Actually, I believe the parking is across the street. It's actually off the premises, your lease premises.
You mean the parking for the gas station?
Originally, as far as I know, you had two parking spaces right next to the station.
Correct.
At the time that these variances first came in, we talked to the applicant, and we said, "Listen, we don't want the tenant to be punished by you, you know, improving this area. What are you doing to his parking?" Before, I mean, granted, maybe it wasn't his property to use, but I've seen buses pull in there, back by Orange County Transit, and park. I've seen buses pull in other areas, stop to get their coffee or their lunch or whatever, okay? This project can't inhibit his business.
Correct, no, yeah.
Okay?
Right.
So, you should really take a look at what they've done, or what they said they've done, for parking, for your business, before we make a judgment on that variance on parking, okay? If you're satisfied, I mean, we feel that it would be enough, but again, we're not the owners of the gas station, okay? They said that they gave seven new parking spaces.
I'm just listening to where he's going. So...
Seven, no, they're nine altogether.
Well, they had the original two, they added seven.
They added seven.
Excuse me?
There's nine altogether.
There's nine altogether.
Eleven altogether.
There's eleven altogether.
There's eleven altogether?
Can you bring that up and show me that, please? Because last time we met, you told us seven. Two existing.
There are two new parallel spaces right here.
Two new ones there.
And seven right here. We added an additional five to the north for the car wash. The car wash by zoning requires five, we propose five. Gas station and convenience store by zoning require 10, we propose 11.
Okay. That was my que, it was a question, you can stay up there for a minute if you would, please? That was, so you're designating those seven and the two new ones there for the gas station...
They're proximate to the store, correct.
Okay. I was a little confused, because at the planning board, you said those parking spaces were always there, and we were told here that they were new.
These seven spaces here have always been on the plan.
They were always on the plan.
But they were not dedicated, but we did...
But they were dedicated for the car wash.
We added, correct. We added five adjacent to the car wash.
Okay, so now those seven are designated for the convenience store gas station, correct? Excuse me?
I do have another, I have another question for you. So, looking at this, the seven that are towards the back, shall we say, individuals getting out of their car, going to the convenience store, will have to, is there a sidewalk? Is there like a little indicator?
There is not.
So it's like Frogger?
It is a existing facility with a door in the front here, with no parking facilities except for these two spaces here.
No, I'm talking about in the shaded area...
I understand, the front of the store.
So they'll be crossing technically, if cars are coming, they're just going.
Yeah, they're crossing the road, basically.
Right, that's what I'm getting at.
Is there any, is there any reason that right where that hand is right there, the gray area to the right of that, that parking spaces couldn't be put there?
There are two new spaces.
There's two, I'm talking about, maybe like what you have over by the five, there's seven there that you're giving us.
It wouldn't fit with the grading, that's in the grass area in between the two driveways.
So you could only put two there, you couldn't turn nose and push that area a little deeper?
Correct.
See, this is, here it is, you know, just the pumps part of the hand, if there was access from the road to the pumps there, that would alleviate one of the access points, one of the access point issues that your client is concerned about.
With all due respect, the planning board, at length, has reviewed this site for traffic and circulation.
Well, I understand that. To me, that's a logical, a simple solution. I was stunned, literally, I was stunned when I looked at that plan and didn't see that, you know?
So back to my original question, how do you guys feel about the parking?
Sure, and I can address that. We did previously, my firm sent a letter to the town board, the planning board, the ZBA, and then a follow-up letter. One of the letters we did provide included a report from La Bella Engineers, La Bella Engineers dated September 10, 2024. That letter, it's stead and part on the second page, "According to Dynamic Engineers' Vehicle Circulation Plan for the Fuel Tanker Truck, the egress path will require a significant reverse maneuver and may block access to, from the angled parking spaces adjacent to the convenience store building. Furthermore, the proposed vehicle circulation plan utilizes a 9,200-gallon truck, which is inaccurate, as the current facility is serviced by a 12,000-gallon delivery truck." It also stated that "A majority of the parking for customers is located to the rear of the facility across the main access aisle. A key objective of parking lot design is to provide accessibility. This involves ensuring that the parking lot can be easily accessed by all users, including those with disabilities. This compromises providing accessible parking spaces, routes to and from the parking lot, a lot designed to be easily navigated by all users with safe, well-lit walkways, and ensuring that pedestrian and vehicle traffic are separated. The proposed layout fails in this regard, as pedestrian access for customers is routed across the main access drive. Parking is often the first thing people experience when arriving at a destination, and the last thing they experience when leaving. If the parking experience is unpleasant, it will impact their decision to return and ultimately impact the business." And so here, these parking areas behind, there's no...
It's obsolete. There's nobody parking in back, and they got to come in front of the building. As a distant point, if you park over the restaurant, it used to be...
And it doesn't address the delivery truck of a soda truck.
Well, I was asking, I was talking about parking right now.
Also, the garbage truck behind it, okay, to pick up the dumpsters, you will have a hard time to pick up the dumpsters.
Yeah, where is the dumpster on this end?
It's in the back. I have my bag, but I also...
Oh, in the corner, yes, yes. I don't know.
So, but I mean, in terms of the trucks too, I mean, the way it would be set up, they might have to maneuver and such to block those two parking spaces, but otherwise, with the spaces in back...
Especially if you got the hoses out and everything, yeah, I get it.
There doesn't appear to be any safety crossing or anything, lighting to ensure that people crossing when it's dark out. It's dark out today at four or five o'clock, you know?
Should we do an executive session to talk about... I get it, I'm not happy with it either. I'm not.
An attorney-client session.
But I would think these do go to the, some of the variances before the board, I mean, certainly not the building height, that's something the board has to consider if it's a minimum allowed or otherwise self-created, but certainly to these other variance issues, it would go, sure.
I think we need to go into attorney-client session, get some legal advice from David, because...
I think that's a good idea. I think that's a good idea. I think, I think what I'd like to do, I mean, we can go around this all night long, we would like to discuss this offline with our client, with our attorney, so I'm going to ask for, we close this session?
No, it would be a motion to go into an attorney-client session for the purpose of seeking and receiving legal advice.
Right.
I'll make that motion.
We'll have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So I ask everybody if they could leave the room, please, so we can discuss this in more detail with our attorney. I'm going to take a motion to come out of...
Attorney-client session.
Motion to come out of attorney-client session?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have questions from the floor, I think one of you guys is going to speak up, you guys like...
Anybody else have any...
Before we went to session, you would voice...
You look like you were raising your hand.
I mean, it was a while ago at this point. I mean, look, the reality is, that I don't think any of these variances that we're asking, I know there's been a lot of planning discussion and circulation discussing, and a lot of discussion of a pre-existing, non-conforming use at this site, we're really here just for these five variances that don't really implicate the gas station. And there's a lot of talk about private agreements and litigation and what rights people have, and that'll be adjudicated, but not by your board, it'll be adjudicated in the courts. And so I think we should just focus on, you know, the five variances that we're here for this evening.
Right. Okay.
So, the board is here reviewing area variances, obviously. Uh, the Towns Code at 150 dash 79 provides the powers for the board, including as the area variances. At Sub C number two, it says, "In making its determination, the zoning board of appeals shall take into account," or excuse me, "take into consideration the benefit to the applicant if the area variance is granted, as ways against, as weighed against the detriment to the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood or community by making, um, such grant. As part of that, the board is supposed to consider factors, um, such as why the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some other method feasible to the applicant to pursue, uh, whether the variance is substantial, um, whether the alleged difficulty was self-created. The board is also required to, shall grant the minimum variance and it shall deem necessary and adequate, and at the same time, preserve and protect the character of the neighborhood, the health, safety, welfare of the community." My client has raised concerns with parking tonight. Additionally, the, if you look at the context of the, uh, the area variance for an extra story, that's about a 20% increase, two and a half stories are allowed, three stories would be about a 20% increase. As the applicant acknowledged, they're seeking use which requires 100...
Here, again, that has no impact on you.
Well, the applicant...
On your client. And we also understand half of that is on the ground, is a basement.
Sure, but, and, but another half a story is another half a story of use, which goes to parking. The applicant is seeking a, a variance of about 100 parking spots to have 50. These parking spots in the back that the applicant has proposed for, uh, my client's use, there's nothing stopping people because there's clearly gonna be an increased parking need. They're proposing way less than what's required. They're proposing an area variance height for the building, which is gonna be more use requiring more parking. People could take these parking spots. People could, you know, there's gonna be an increased demand. So, this, the issue of parking and where parking is allowed, it does implicate those other variances. And so, to the extent, you know, this applicant is coming in, they're not the owner, the zoning has been the same, the owner has been here. They're not, a difficulty wasn't thrust upon them. They're asking the board, please, let us be able to do these substantial variances, you know, 200% decrease on parking, 20% increase on use, and it's causing problems, it's causing difficulty for my client as it relates to parking and the uncertainty with that. So, we would say there's a lot of issues here besides just the septic, which has trucks coming into, garbage, which they pick up about three times a week and has trucks coming into. There seems to be a lot of uncertainties and unknown that just weren't addressed to justify the variances, uh, we're talking about. Certainly as it relates to, uh, loading, parking, and, um, the, um, building height. Thank you.
Sir, I got a quick question for you. I mean, I, we understand your concerns and what you're saying, but this project proposed the variances they're asking for is based off the project at the gas station.
Sure.
Or, or your client's convenience store. We're looking at this as a whole, looking at the variances that are requested. So, we're not just looking at that one building. We're, you know, it's, the law is the law. We're looking at the propo, you know, the proposed project in front of us. That's how we determine the variance factors and granting them, not based off, you know, you keep going back to your client, your client, your client. Again, that should have been, you know, addressed sooner.
Well, I would disagree in the sense that the, the code standard for an area variance requires you to consider the benefit to the applicant for these variances. The applicant is saying, we need, even though our project is gonna, requires under the code 156 parking spots, we're asking you to give us a 200% decrease variance to only have 50 parking spots. But that, it, as part of what you're considering, what's the impacts to the surrounding uses? The surrounding uses has an existing parking setup, and what's being proposed is gonna be impacting them.
I understand, but our job is to look at the project and grant the variances based off of that. It's here as a whole, complete, and, you know, and it's still preliminary, it's not...
Understood, but there, it, you're supposed to look at it in terms of what impacts it has on the surrounding community. It's right in the, the code provisions. You're supposed to look at it, is this really a difficulty that was thrust upon them, where they're knowingly walking into it and asking for these substantial variances for a project?
I mean, you're basic, you know, you're basing it, again, the impact of the business, but it went through all the studies and motions of the environment, the community, the population, traffic.
But that doesn't justify granting variances they're here asking for. They're saying, we want a variance for another 20% of use on a building. That's up to you guys. They're at, they're saying, though, even though we're asking for more use, we want you also give us a variance for way less parking than what the code requires. So, even though the town of Fishkill has a code that says when you're doing these types of uses, you have to have a minimum of 156 parking spots, they're here tonight saying, we want a way bigger use than what's allowed, and we want way less parking. And so, when you're dealing with parking, when they're impacting my client's business, that's certainly something you have to consider because the parking, um, they're asking for, way less for a bigger use is certainly gonna impact my client, and that's something you're supposed to consider. But that's what you're supposed to consider. I mean, the code does say, "In making determination, uh, the court of appeal," or, excuse me, "the zoning board of appeals shall take into consideration the benefit to the applicant if the area variance is granted, as weighed against the detriment to the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood or community by such grant."
Okay, let, let me ask the applicant here. How can we deter, how can we make sure that those parking spots is gonna be for this food mart? How can you guarantee that those...
I mean, a couple things. One, you can make it a condition of approval, that those parking spaces are dedicated, we could put up signs. Second of all, yeah, we are seeking...
Can you speak up, please?
We are speaking, seeking a large parking variance, but you've got a, a letter from Dutchess County Planning that says...
I understand, but you know, can, can you guarantee that those, those extra parking spots are going to go for the food mart?
Guarantee, I don't know how I can guarantee, but I can say you can make it a condition of your approval, the planning board, you can make it a condition of their approval, and we're more than happy to put signs up.
Maybe you can do some signage.
Yeah, 100%. I mean, can I stop someone from ignoring the sign? Absolutely not, I can't do that, but I can put up signs that say this is for the gas station. And they talk a lot about rights that they have. I just wanna point out, they got up here, said there was an approved site plan. On the record, there is no approved site plan in the town files. So, there's nothing that says, oh, we have this many parking spaces, we have this, and they put the lease on the record, I'm not gonna get into the private agreement, but the lease specifically says their area is 120 by 60. So...
We're just considering that it could be a detriment to the neighborhood, okay? East neighborhood, okay?
Well, he's actually our problem. I'm not sure that...
That's my opinion.
Yeah.
Okay, and that, do I have a right to have an opinion?
100% you do. I, I'm not saying, I wasn't saying you didn't have a right to have an opinion.
You're looking like, you want just to rubber stamp this call?
We've been at this for two years, I've been here, this is our fifth meeting here. When we, when we left, when we left the last meeting, with all due respect, when we left, it was almost ready to be taken to a vote, and it was said, just go to the planning board to make sure that they're okay with this plan because we want to vote on the final plan. And we said, okay. We spent two meetings at the planning board, they went back, based on your concerns, back to CPL, their consulting engineers, had the memo reviewed, and came back with the answer. I know it's not the answer you might have expected or wanted, but that's the answer that came back from their professional consultants.
I just, I have one comment, and...
Anybody else have any more comments?
I do, I, I just have a comment, and, and, you know, I'm not a voting member, I'm an alternate, so, I'm, but I'm gonna share my thoughts anyway. You know, the, the parking, we asked for more parking for this specific business, and, and you did accommodate that. However, and I didn't realize this until it was pointed out, you have the handicap parking where someone would have to wheel over 100 feet to get to the front of the store.
Across two lanes of traffic.
Across traffic. So, you know, although, and, and what my neighbor here is, is saying, and I agree with, we have to look at certain, uh, aspects of that project as a whole, but as a human being, I find that really offensive, that, that you are expecting someone who is already at a disadvantage to cross traffic and go 100 feet to get to the front of the store. So, you know, with no sidewalks, and it doesn't really look like lighting. So, that's just my commentary, and if I were, you know, I'm on the zoning board, I'm not on the planning board. If I were on the planning board, I, that, I would be very troubled by the location of those seven spots. I appreciate that you did a comedy and you added, I think you're the one that added, right? So, I appreciate that you did that, but I do find it very, very troubling, and, you know, I don't have kids myself, but I, every time I see a kid in a parking lot, it's like my heart, just because they're unpredictable, and, you know, I, I just, I see a lot of danger here, and I would be very concerned for the public's safety. So, that's all I can comment on.
Anybody else have any more comments?
No, I'm done.
Well, I, I, I have the same issue with the, um, with the parking, but I, you did address it, you did go to the, you did do what we asked you to do, went back to the planning board and got their preliminary approval. So, uh, that's, you know, and, and also with the sign, you, you know, you're gonna do one sign instead of two, so you've done your part. That's it.
I was concerned with the handicap parking also.
Understood, and the planning board brought that up as well, so that's a discussion point for when we go back there for our final approvals.
So, planning board is aware of that?
Yes.
And they didn't express a concern with it at all? So, so, everybody's good with it?
We, we, we talked it through, you know, if they have additional concerns, we will address that during final site plan approval, but you saw the memo that their consultants came back with.
Just as, as an average human being, I mean, you should be concerned as well. You don't seem to be, in my opinion.
Could be any of, any of us one day.
Indeed.
Or today.
Ron, you got somebody else that wants to speak? Ron? Somebody else that wants to speak?
I'm sorry.
Just to, uh, just to respond to that comment, the existing gas station...
Can you speak up, please?
The existing gas station does not currently have any ADA accessible parking.
I'm sorry?
The, the gas station currently does not have any ADA accessible parking. The spot we are adding is adding one space to an existing non-conforming. We have no requirement to add any ADA accessibility. We are adding one to do the best we can.
Was there an ADA requirement back in 97?
There was no site plan approval for that building.
Okay, so, what he's saying is, it's not required. He doesn't care, but it's not required.
I know, but we care.
We do.
The seven parking spot, what I said is absolute, is about, the elevation about five to six feet.
You're speaking to my...
The elevation is about five to six feet drop. If somebody wanna push a wheelchair, you have to, you need an escalator to walk.
Right.
And also, they do, they're going to bring a fast food. Fast food, a variance based on hardship. They're not the owners. It costs on me a hardship. When they open a fast food next to me, they're gonna take my breakfast, my coffee, all my stuff out of the convenience store. Please, just take this consideration. These guys coming from my place, they find a piece of property, they wanna put the, you know, 10 pounds, uh, potatoes in one bag, and they want everything. Oh, I've been here two years. Where's the owner? What he say hardship? The hardship is on the land owner, is not on the purchaser, where he wanna be rich overnight. If he like the property, it's okay, he could stay with the soft storage, he don't need no fast food, he don't need no car wash, it's the hangout for the drugs at nighttime. You will have kids all over those, those self-serve car washes.
I understand.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Business competition is not a factor that you guys can consider. Any board can't consider business competition.
Quick question. Does it have to be a car wash and not a laundromat?
I'm sorry?
Does it have to be a car wash and not a laundromat?
Does it have to be a car wash and not a laundromat?
Yeah, could it be a laundromat?
It's not what the applicant is proposing. I'm sure it could be any number of things. I don't know if laundromats are permitted in that zoning district. I haven't checked.
Personally, I think laundromat's more needed over there. I understand, you know, I understand what his concerns about that too. So, all right. Any more, uh, comments?
Just, uh, one last thing to add. When we are back at the planning board for final site plan, if they are still concerned with the location of the ADA stall, we could always relocate that to one of the two directly adjacent to the building.
I would like to see that. Thank you. Okay, we're ready to make a, just, uh, go through the five factors.
Did you close the public?
Motion to close the public hearing. Have a motion to close the public? Motion. All in favor? Aye. Okay. All right.
Do you want me to walk you through it?
Yeah, yeah, I'm, I feel beat up here, you know?
So, um, as you know, there's a balancing test, it's, uh, you have to, uh, balance the benefit to the applicant, the benefit that's being sought by the applicant, by the variances, against the, uh, any detriment to the health, safety, and welfare of the community that will be caused by the grant of the variances. And that's guided by the five factors. I'll go through the five factors in a second. We've got five remaining variances that the, that are before the board. There were six. The monument sign, they had been asking for two variances on the mon, for two signs, I'm sorry, let me be clear. They were asking for a variance to allow two monument signs, they withdrawn that. So, that leaves five variances left, okay? One is a floor area vari, uh, sorry, floor area ratio variance, FAR, okay? The, they're asking for a .58, uh, and the .4 is the max permitted, okay? They're looking for a boundary, uh, for the setback for the drive-through, right? They have, they're providing 133 foot setback, but 150 feet are required, so it's a 17-foot variance. On the parking, they're looking for, um, uh, approval for 57 parking spaces, whereas 156 are required, so the variance is for 99. The off-street loading, and it comes to the storage facility, they're, uh, looking for, uh, a variance to permit two loading spaces, whereas the code would require seven, so the variance is for five. And then they're looking for a variance for that storage building for maximum building height, which is, uh, the max is two and a half stories, and they're looking for three stories, um, because of the basement. Those are the, those are the variances. So, what we can do is, I'll give you the five factors, and you can go through, you know, uh, uh, each of them, and we'll, we'll talk about them all in one discussion. And you're not required to grant all of them, you're not required to deny all of them, you can grant or deny any, uh, any, any of them in between, but, and for the sake of, um, you know, efficiency, let's talk about all the five factors on each of them together. And then there's, if they start diverging, we can talk about that and we can go from there, rather than go through all five factors five times, we'll be here for another hour. We can, we can take it as it goes, if that's okay with everybody. So, um, the first factor is whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties will be created by the granting of the area variance. How do you all feel on, on that factor, on the, on the five variances sought?
Well, uh... I, I don't think that the, uh...
Would it be easier, you know, to provide structure for me to go through each factor and then, and then step through each variance? Maybe that is easier.
My, my, I always go through, yeah.
Why don't we do that?
You know, I, I don't have a problem with the, uh, the floor area ratio at all.
Okay, so, so you wanna, so why don't we, then I'll take back what I said. It might be easier for some structure to go through each variance. So, for the, for the FAR variance, okay, um, does any, uh, the first factor being, you know, is there any detriment, undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties?
No.
Does anybody think so?
No, no.
Okay. How about, uh, whether the benefit can be achieved through any other feasible mean on that FAR?
Oh, you wanna go through all five?
Yes.
And then, okay.
Yeah, I think we could do it efficiently if we, if we, if we run through it, and it's, it gives a good structure for the conversation. Anybody, on the FAR, does anybody feel like that's gonna cause a, is there some feasible method other than the grant of a variance?
I think that was just a legal technicality, basically the basement floor area, right? So, not a...
Yeah, no issue.
Okay. Does anybody feel that that's substantial? That's the third factor?
No.
Does any feel, anyone feel in the FAR whether that will cause an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions?
No.
No.
And is it self-created?
Yes.
Well, yeah.
Okay, okay. The next variance is the, the boundary setback. The first factor, the undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood, that factor, anybody feel that the, that boundary variance would, would have an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood?
Is there gonna be a wall there?
No.
Or trees or anything like, I know that there's going to be...
There is a landscape buffer.
Landscape buffer there, right?
Yep, correct.
Yeah, yeah, okay, so then the answer's no. Because the beer distributor's right in front, right?
Yep, there's landscaping all in this area here. And the drive-through is right here.
Okay.
Okay, so, given the landscape barriers, anybody, anybody feel that that would cause an undesirable change?
No, no.
Okay, anyone feel that there's other, any other feasible method? Any feasible alternatives?
No, really.
Is that substantial?
Well, yeah.
Okay, okay. Is that, is there a consensus on that? That it's substantial and, let me, what we'll continue on, on number four, is there an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions caused by that boundary of variance?
I don't think so.
Probably not, no.
And is that self-created?
Yes.
Okay. Does anyone feel that the substantiality of that variance is, you know, or the self-created nature of it is determinative?
I don't think so.
In the overall scheme, no.
Okay.
Anybody else?
The third, the third variance is the off-street parking. That's the, where it's 156 parking spaces, and they're looking for 57 parking spaces. So, the first factor, does anyone feel that an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties would be created by the granting of that area variance?
No.
Well, it, it is a detriment, okay, to a client on the, and this is, this is the issue that we have, but they did address it. The board isn't happy with it. We're not happy with it. We're not happy with the location of it, especially with the, the handicapped.
And the safety issue crossing the street.
And the safety issue crossing the, the road, which is now going to be likely a busy road. But it, they did address it, so I would like to have the planning board take another look at that. We, we did discuss that, you know.
Yeah, in terms of the, in terms of the location of the parking...
The location and the safety issue, any of handicap.
Does anyone think the overall numbers of the parking, that's the variance that's requested?
And, and...
Like, the, the overall number of the parking is the, is the, is the variance being requested? You, you have a problem with where the, where the planning board has, has gone in terms of the site layout and the site circulation, but the overall parking numbers is...
No, no, and, and we wanna also make sure that these parking that he put in the plan for the food mart is designated, is guaranteed somehow for the food mart. And I don't know how we, whether it's signage or something.
We could put that in as, as a, if we pass it.
Right.
As a condition.
I'd just like to echo Ron as well. I mean, the number of parking spaces, I don't have a problem with. I do have a problem with the location and the, I think it's a safety issue, having people park across the street and having to walk through traffic, or wheelchair through traffic, or walk kids through traffic to get to the convenient mart. I, I don't like that, and I think the planning board should take another look at it before giving final approval on the site. But, it's not our jurisdiction, so I have to rely on a planning board to hopefully, they're hearing me and hearing us, to take another look at this. Thank you.
Okay. So, so if I could summarize, it sounds like the answer is that the over, the variance sought, the overall number of spaces, that's the variance being sought, would not cause a, a detriment or, you know, a detrimental impact or an undesirable change in the neighborhood or community, or detriment to nearby properties. But the, you're, you're concerned about the, the layout of that parking and want to encourage the planning board to take a look at that at its next phase, and to revisit the issue of how those spaces will be laid out, but you recognize that that's a, that that's a planning board jurisdiction issue, not a zoning board jurisdiction issue? Is that, have I summarized that right?
Yeah, that sounds good. I'm just very concerned about the safety of the residents of Fishkill and Beacon using that facility, that's all.
Now, I guess the traffic thing too, but this is again out of our jurisdiction. How do we address that?
As part of the parking.
Well, we can't.
Well, if you're talking about traffic from a site circulation standpoint, that's a planning board issue.
That's a planning board issue.
Yeah.
Even though they addressed it, we're not happy with that either.
Before final approval, we wish they would look at it again.
Yeah, they already did, so that's...
No, they could look at it again. They didn't give a final approval yet.
Yeah, they may have to take another look at the traffic circulation if they have to move, modify those spaces closer or something.
I think something can be done, I really do.
Okay, understood, I think. Anybody feel to the contrary, anybody on the board? Or, we've covered that factor on, on the parking?
We've covered it. We beat that to death.
Okay.
Don't wanna have any pets.
The second factor on the parking variance, does anybody feel like there's an alternative to the number of parking spaces? You know, those, can, can the benefit sought be achieved by some other method that's feasible?
I don't think so.
No.
I, I assume, subject to the same, you know, remarks, that you believe that there's alternatives in regard to the, the layout, but you can't impose that because you're, it's, it's not the issue that's before you.
Exactly, yes.
Yes.
All right, the third factor is whether that area variance is substantial?
Yes, it is.
It's very substantial.
Okay. Does anybody feel that that variance would have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or zoning district?
No, no.
Okay, and is that self-created?
Yes, well, yeah.
Okay. Does anybody feel that the, what you've said so far, including that it's substantial and the self-created nature of it is, would be determinative and would require a denial, or do you think that all things considered, the balancing test, even though you have answered yes to numbers three and five, you know, still weighs in favor of a grant? You know, with, you know, maybe with conditions that we can discuss in a little while about the designation of the spots?
I don't think we can deny it because they addressed our...
Which could have been...
All right, so, the next variance up is the...
Loading, off-street loading.
The off-street loading, where they're looking for the seven loading space, I'm sorry, looking for two, whereas seven are required. In, in that regard, the first factor is whether an undesirable change would be, would be produced in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties. Anybody feel that that variance would create any such change or detriment?
I don't think so.
No. No.
Anybody believe that there's any feasible alternative to achieve the benefit sought other than through a variance on that one?
We had, we had determined that this was a business decision on the client, on the applicant's part, so, that's why we are allowing this. We're not challenging this.
Okay. Does anybody believe that that is substantial?
It is substantial.
It is substantial.
Okay. And number four is whether it would have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood?
I don't think so.
And last, was it self-created?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so same question I've asked for the others, because you did answer yes on three and five, does anybody feel that the substantiality of the variance or the self-created nature of it is, would be determinative and require a denial, or you think, to the contrary, that on balance, it's still worthy of a grant?
I think it's worthy, yeah.
Okay. Okay, and then the last is the building height, the three stories versus two and a half. First factor, you know, any undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties on that?
No, we, we, it's half a story, and, and I don't understand why this is even a request, to be honest with you, because...
Just like code.
From a, from a firematic point of view, that's where the 35 feet comes from, okay? And that's, this is not going to be, you know, people aren't gonna be living in this facility, and so it's less than 35 feet anyway.
Okay.
So...
I'm sorry, I got ahead of myself on this. That was, which factor was I just on?
That was the first one.
That was the first one, yeah. So, two is whether there's any feasible alternative to that one?
No.
No.
Is that one substantial?
I don't, I don't believe so.
Would there be any adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions?
No.
And self-created?
Yeah, of course.
So, it, based upon my notes, it sounds like, maybe what we should do is go back and do, do a vote, do a vote on each one, or we can do a vote on all of them. Does the board have a preference? I think, I think the factors all lined up on all five the same by, by my, my count here. Does, before I make a recommendation, does anybody feel like, like we wanna do them separately? Or anybody, are we good to do them all together?
I think we can all go on one.
Okay, okay. So, let's, let's, so it sounds like it's, it's, we're lining up in favor of a grant. It sounded to me like there was some discussion about a condition, at least insofar as the parking was concerned, that the, that the 11, is it the 11 spaces that were designated in and around the, the gas station and food mart? It's 11, right?
Yes.
Total, that they be designated as, you know, for use by that, by that particular use and signed?
Signed.
Or, do you wanna impose that, or do you wanna recommend that to the planning board? You wanna impose that yourselves?
Well, I think we need to impose that.
I agree.
Okay.
The designation.
They did offer to do it, so...
They did offer to do it?
Yeah.
That's, okay. Designate, designate...
Yeah.
The 11 and sign them accordingly, right?
Yes.
But the placement of the spaces and the placement of the handicapped, okay, should be reviewed, which may also require a review of the traffic study. And my thought is, if the spaces are moved adjacent to the gas station as opposed to across the street, they'll have to move the street, which would...
So, so here's what I would suggest, sounds like what I'm hearing is, what you'd like is a grant of the variances, and the conditions that I'm seeing are, number one, that those 11 spaces be designated for use by the gas station and food mart, and that they be signed...
Each one be signed.
Each one be signed accordingly. And that you're recommending that the planning board take another hard look at the site layout in regard, specific regard to the, to the gas station and food mart area with a view...
Parking for, specifically for the food mart, and, yeah.
The seven spaces.
The, the...
Around the building.
Talking about the seven up top.
The seven up top, like, in order, you, what do you, what do you want them to look at? You want them to look, like...
Bring those closer.
Looking at, bringing them closer and bring, all of them or the handicap?
Well, handicap, I think you...
Such a safety issue to me, I would say all of them.
Okay, so, so, we can't, we can't impose upon them to do anything, we can ask them to review it, we could ask, the condition could be that the, that the planning board take a hard look at the, the layout and circulation issues of the parking, all of the parking around, including those seven spaces, including the handicap space...
And the handicap is the closest, closest to, the closest space, as, as close as possible.
And moving handicap, like, as close as possible?
I mean, David, just if you can stress the safety issue, I think that's the biggest point.
Right, right.
Okay. Okay, so, that's, that's, does anybody, and I think there would be standard conditions, you know, that they follow the plans as submitted to you. I don't know what the, what the last dated, what's the date of the last plan submitted to this board?
Probably right there on the revision block.
Yeah, it's just...
Excuse me. If we have to follow those plans, and the planning board wants us to relocate the parking as you're asking them to take a look at, then we would be in violation of our approval. Yeah, that's a fair point. That's, that's, yeah, this is a little bit of a different scenario. Is that, that standard of kitchen, you're right, that, that standard of condition would probably not apply. You know, so, so it would be continued review and final approval by the planning board.
But it's still a recommendation, right?
Right, so I'm just, I'm just thinking through it and jotting them down so I have it right. The first condition is gonna be, you know, continued, continued review and final approval by planning board. You know, planning board, you know, to, to review the, the site circulation and parking issues by the food mart as we discussed, with a view towards safety and the handicap spot in particular. Designating the parking spots, those 11, you know, for use by the food mart and gas station, and sign them accordingly. And then, you know, comply with all the laws, rules, and regulations and payment of all due fees.
Now, a quick question to the board. What if we lose a spot? What if they do move the parking closer, but we lose one of the spot, one or two of the spots, would you guys be okay with that? I'd be okay with it.
Yeah.
I think we just have to, I mean, what you're approving is the overall number of spots on the site. They can't then, they can't then approve something that's minus one.
Okay, okay.
We lose it a death.
And they come back to us.
If they did, then we deal with it.
So, so the, so the conditions, those, it would be a grant, what you'd be doing, somebody would be making a motion to grant all of the five variances as sought and, as, as applied for, subject to the following conditions. Continued review and final approval by the planning board, that the planning board, in connection with that review, should, is, is, is to review, again, the site layout and circulation issues and parking around the gas station and food mart, with a view towards safety of the location and handicap, that they, that the designate, the 11 spots on the plan submitted are to be designated for use by that food mart and gas station and signed accordingly, payment of all due fees, and compliance with all the laws, rules, and regulations. Is that, did I get everything?
Make sure it's each, each individual spot is signed, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so, rather than restate that again, if somebody wants to, would make that motion, adopt what counsel just said as their motion, that would be a fair motion. If anybody wants further discussion about it or anything else, speak now.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Isabel makes a motion, have a second? Second. You guys aren't gonna, either one of you guys gonna second?
Second.
Okay, Doug's gonna second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, then take another, another motion to direct me to prepare a resolution consistent with that and to authorize the chairman to sign if he finds it to be consistent.
Motion to prepare and have it ready to be signed by the chairman. Have a second?
Sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
I know you all have spent a lot of time on these applications, so on behalf of the applicant, myself, just wanna thank you very much for all your time, appreciate it. Have a great night.
Okay, we have one more.
There's nobody here.
Nobody here.
The last one.
They leave? Should we, should we...
You're, I mean, I, I'm trying to...
Nobody on the lobby, right?
Should we... Oh, they never show. Another front of variance.
So, you could, like, if anybody's, these are your options. You can punt it to the next meeting and have it on again, have the applicant come for a first meeting. If, if you've all looked at it and you have no questions about what's being asked for and you find the application to be in order, you, you could vote to accept the application and put it on for a public hearing next month. It's really your discretion.
I, I looked at it, it's a flag lot, and the... It's a flag lot, and the shed is, even though it's in the front yard, the shed is going to be facing the house in the front yard, but it's also against the...
So it's out of view of public eye, really?
Yeah, it's out, you can't see it from the road.
It's facing another shed. I'm going to...
Yeah, it's, yeah.
What is a flag? What is a flag? You said it was a flag?
It's a flag lot.
Flag-shaped lot.
Oh, all right.
Yeah, and then it, you know...
Gotcha, yeah.
So, I don't...
You need a motion for that, right?
Need to accept and then a motion to dismiss a public hearing.
Motion to accept? Second.
Okay. And then we have another motion to...
Do we do it all in favor?
All in favor, aye. And we have another motion to, for a public hearing for December 17th for this application.
Motion to move it to December 17th for application for six Petticoat lanes.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. My favorite motion of the day.
Motion to New Jersey.
Second. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?